Welcome back, it is Hard Fact 92.3 Nigeria. Eleven minutes gone past, 4pm, conversation continues. This is going to be a review of what most, what biggest story is going on in the country. The Constitution Republic here, a state that is power devolution, new state in the southeast. Stories from the Sun News online. On the review of the 1999 constitution as amended, I can publicly hear it yesterday, in the various geopolitical zones across the country, which renewed clamour for creation of additional states, among other demands listed by the state governors and other stakeholders. Because in the state governor, Nsir Eryfa, and his delta and plan to counterparty Faya Kwa and Saba Nalung, respectively, topped the list of governors calling for power devolution and true federalism. And, uh, state governor Ifai Guayi declared his administration support for constitution amendments, uh, that will enhance the nation's unity and prosperity in an environment where justice, fairness and equity shall prevail. Uh, Governor Babajide Somwulu of Lagos State declared the Lagos, who declared the Lagos Centre for the Public Hearing opened yesterday, demanded a special economic status for the state, saying, "The progress and prosperity of Nigeria is inextricably linked to the progress and prosperity of Lagos State." Somwulu also demanded for state police and entrenchment of true fiscal federalism in Nigeria. Uh, Sukheta State Governor Emilo Waziri Tambawal, represented by Sepezi, described the constitution as the reference point of democracy. Kebi State Governor Senator Obaka Actuku Bagudu noted that the exercise is coming at the time of Nigeria's life when more dialogue is in dire need. So lots of discussions, presentations, optimism, and I dare say, and must say, even skepticism also, as far as these public hearings are concerned, which should lead to a review of the constitution. So we're discussing that at this time, and as I did mention earlier on, I'm sure there are many sides to this, but what should be the purpose of this constitution review or this public hearing going on right now? Which should lead to a constitution review? What should be the purpose of it all? Well, joining me via phone for the conversation is Barista Richard Wokocha. He's, um, Associate Professor of Public Law at the Rivers State University, one-time Chairman of Nigeria Bar Association, Amok Branch. Barista Wokocha, good evening, you're welcome to the show.
Thank you, Dyo. I'm governor in Nigeria.
Now, I gather that you're unable to be here, uh, at this, in the studio, because you also had to make a presentation at a public hearing today. Am I right about that?
That's correct, Dyo.
And, uh, so if you don't mind my asking, even though you are not officially, or not even unofficially, uh, one of our correspondents, but if you don't mind my asking you, uh, how did it go at the Port Hackett Centre of the Public Hearing today?
Well, um, it went well. Um, the only challenge there was the time, understandably. Uh, so they tried to dispense with the memorandum from the port on, uh, long distance, cross river state and a fly bomb, uh, after taking some officials before they now start attending to others. Uh, at the end of the day, I think what was important was that whoever was just submitting the memorandum, because there was no time to talk about, uh, I'd ring dead more than two minutes, for example. So it's just to summarize what you have in the memorandum you submitted, and that was , there was not enough time for any of that. But again, as I said, the important thing is that whatever you want to say, you have already submitted the memorandum. So it was okay.
All right, great. So what exactly is going on right now? I imagine that there might be persons who, yes, they've heard that, uh, some constitution review is supposedly going to happen, yes, they've heard it reported on the news, uh, maybe even in, in, uh, in the print media, head on radio, watched on the TV, that there is a public hearing, uh, on constitutional review happening in different regions of the country right now, but may not have come to terms or have a firm grasp of what exactly that even implies. So what exactly is going on right now?
Well, um, the Senate, uh, called for memorandum, the Senate Commission Public Hearing called for, they put a public memorandum on, uh, review of the constitution, which is public memorandum on areas, uh, you want amended, specific items, I think seventeen, sixteen items represented as areas on which they wanted, uh, uh, persons, stakeholders to make, uh, submissions. So, the idea, I suppose, is that they want to start the process with, um, what you can call, uh, something that reflects feeling of Nigerians, and, uh, with that, they can now come up with a draft which they will consider in the House, and the amendment process proper will begin. So it's a review process, which is like, uh, almost like a holistic look at the constitution, uh, that's distinct from drawing up a new constitution. It's also distinct from, uh, the regular amendment where one or two sections are taken up for amendment. So it's a, a far richer review, uh, covering a wide range of areas for the review of the constitution.
Now, what is, what is happening right now? Is it commonplace to have these public hearings and such to bring expression, a wide review of the constitution, and have people submit memorandum across the country? Is that a common feature, or is it something novel?
I think it's all right for a review, because what we have in having is constitutional amendments, where specific sections were amended. So you want, they want to look at, uh, it's almost like taking a holistic look at the constitution, that's why the process is different. In the cases of amendments, they begin on the floor of the House before they hold a public hearing. But because they are doing a review, a holistic look at the constitution, uh, that's why they are beginning with public hearing, so that, um, what they are looking at by the time they sit in the House will be something that has started, uh, representations from people or views presented by stakeholders. So it's not regular for amendment process, it's different from the amendment process, because this time is the public hearing that is starting the process.
There have been concerns raised in not a few quarters as to the, um, uh, might I say, the, um, the, the status, if you will, of the current Nigerian 1999 constitution as amended. Uh, there are several persons who have said it does not represent the aspirations and yearnings of Nigerians, as they would rather have everyone believe, or they would have everyone believe, that the constitution, uh, was not initiated by Nigerians. Uh, very often, they, they reference the, the initial part of the conversation where it, of the constitution, pardon me, where it has written, "We the people," and let's say it was a document drafted of the people Nigeria, and on that basis, they have consistently called, drawn completely and entirely document. Uh, what, what's your, what's your take on that? Uh, scrapping the constitution, designing a new one, or reviewing the one we have right now?
Um, I think the factor, the critical factor for me is not whether they are reviewing the old one or they are making a new one. Uh, for me, there are one or two things you will do to the constitution, and automatically it's as good as a new one. The critical issue we have, what has gone wrong with the Nigerian state, is what happened when the military took over governor, that's the first military administration. They turned the country from a federal state into a unitary state, and the way they did that was to remove twenty-two items from the concurrent list, which enabled the country to operate as a federation in the first republic. They removed those twenty-two items and transferred them to the exclusive list, and so they became matters over which only the national government could handle. And that automatically meant that the state governments lost their powers or capacities, uh, to transact on those areas, including making income on those areas which they used to make and pay fifty percent tax to the centre. So it was the removal of the capacity of the state government that has led to this, has led to the call for restructuring. As I've always said, in the first republic, there's no cry for marginalisation, uh, we are not, uh, one another's enemies, and we are not, uh, one another's problem, no. Every region effectively did what they could, utilizing what they had comprehensive advantage over. So you had Granat and Hyde on one side, you had Coco on the other side, you had palm oil this way, and each of them effectively utilized the resources they could make from their investments in those areas and their management of those natural resources. That was all that went wrong. So if by an amendment now, that twenty-two items are transferred back to concurrent list, removed from exclusive list, and put back in concurrent list, you have solved the problem of restructuring automatically. It takes us back to the independent situation. Nineteen sixty-three constitution did not alter anything, it only added more items, uh, to the concurrent list. So all you need to do is do that, and you have something as good as first republic Nigerian constitution. What can you get from a new constitution beyond that? For me, it's not a problem of, uh, the process, whether we'll come with a new constitution or we do a constitutional review. I believe that we can achieve what we want, what is important is to focus on what needs to be changed. I can assure you that that singular change, the singular return of items removed from concurrent list to the concurrent list, will ensure that you have a true federation, and it will ensure that you have fiscal federation. And those are the, the issues that we are talking about, and those are the things that have given back to all the other issues we are complaining about. So you can, you can solve the problem by amendment.
All right, Barista, so how exactly is this supposed to work? And I'm talking about the, the public hearings, right? Senate or, or the, the leadership, the legislature, simply going to take all of these presentations, recommendations, submissions, a memorandum? Are they simply going to take all of them and say, okay, this is what Nigerians want, uh, as far as the review or amendment, or, well, I think review is the more appropriate term here, the review to the constitution?
Yeah, what they are giving.
Exactly. So the review to the constitution, this is what Nigerians want, so let's simply, uh, take all of it, tabulate everything, put it all together, and then one bam, throw it into the constitution? Is that, is that what's going to happen eventually?
Certainly not, because Nigerians want different things. Uh, even my experience today at this meeting, uh, you have different people with different interests. So their responsibility will be to gather this, and as representatives of Nigeria, of Nigerians, uh, and the lawmakers of Nigeria, to factor in the majority of opinion of Nigerians. The idea is to give the law the spirit of the people, make the law reflect the thinking and the, um, aspirations of the people. So it's for them to distill from the portfolio of opinions and, uh, views presented in the memorandum that are presented to them, and so distill three points that will amount to what majority of Nigerians want in the review of the constitution. There is no guarantee that they will give you all, no, they can't do that, the constitution cannot contain all, and if they do that, there will be conflict, because we do not all want the same thing. Some want, uh, local government autonomy, some do not want local government autonomy, and all that, uh, some wants the local government the way it is now, some are saying, no, local government is an instrument with which the stage will develop its territory. So it shouldn't be a constitutional matter, it shouldn't be a tiered government, or one that is recognized as distinct by law or by the constitution. So they can't do that, they will distill, uh, they are supposed to, or expected to distill majority of the views expressed by majority of Nigerians, and make sure that they reflect that in the lawmaking, especially, uh, sorry, uh, especially, and, uh, at last, they will be the ones to come up with what they want reviewed in the constitution.
So Barista.
The idea here is for them to hear from the people, so that they can reflect what the people want, yes.
So whilst, whilst the, the act in itself, uh, seems, and it looks democratic, it looks like an attempt, it looks like genuine attempt to get the input of Nigerians, uh, in the, in the constitutional review process, in actual fact, it, it may not be democratic, because once again, there is nothing that binds the lawmakers, there's nothing that states that they must take the recommendations and impede those in any constitution review. So in actual fact, they could, I'm not saying they will, they could still serve undemocratic, selfish, uh, tendencies and interests.
You are correct, uh, because this is not a constituent assembly. If it was a constituent assembly coming up with a new constitution, it controls the majority of the reports, and that's what they want. But this is not a constitutional, uh, them to have the, get, to reflect it in what they are going to do in the constitution, no. We are not only adding our views to those who are going to review the constitution.
So we have to go for a break now, but we'll answer a response to this. What then is the essence of this? If the recommended people mistake, they might even be, even be in the best interest of the nation, it might even represent the international, the majority of Nigeria, and the democracy, the majority will have their way while the minority can have their say. So if, in spite of all of this, um, the, the, as right as they may be, may still not be hidden on the point of it all. You give us that turn for, uh, Hansel and Shelly, please.
And let us connect you to your customers. Connect with your customers, advertise on 92.3 Nigeria Info. Visit our downtown office at shop nine, media tricks of all Gracie's Plaza, opposite FIRS, Stadium Road, Port Hackett, and book your commercials. Call 0817 001 8162. And let us connect you to your customers. Connect with your customers, advertise on 92.3 Nigeria Info. Visit our downtown office at shop nine, media tricks of all Gracie's Plaza, opposite FIRS, Stadium Road, Port Hackett, and book your commercials. Call 017 001 8162. That is 0817 001 8162. And let us connect you to your customers. Connect with your customers, advertise on 92.3 Nigeria Info. Visit our downtown office at shop nine, media tricks of all Gracie's Plaza, opposite FIRS, Stadium Road, Port Hackett, and book your commercials. Call 0817 001 8162. That is 0817 001 8162. And let us connect you to your, your customers. Advertise on 92.3 Nigeria, tricks of all Gracie's Plaza, opposite FIRS, Stadium Road, Port Hackett, and book your commercials. Call 0817 001 8162. That is 0817 001 8162. And let us connect you to your customers. Connect with your customers, advertise on 92.3 Nigeria Info. Visit our downtown office at shop nine, media tricks of all Gracie's Plaza, opposite FIRS, Stadium Road, Port Hackett, and book your commercials. Call 0817 001 8162. That is 0817 001 8162. And let us connect you to your customers. Connect with your customers, advertise on 92.3 Nigeria Info. Visit our downtown office shop nine, media tricks of all Gracie's Plaza, opposite FIRS, Stadium Road, Port Hackett, and book your commercials. Call 0817 001 8162. And let's talk.
And now, Hard Facts. Hard Facts with Dyo. Welcome back, it is Hard Fact 92.3 Nigeria Info, here in Port Hackett, I'm Dyo. We've got twenty-six minutes ago before five o'clock, my guest, Barista Richard Wokocha, still joins me via phone. Barista Wokocha, you're welcome back.
Thank you, Dyo.
And we're discussing the public hearings on the constitution review that's taking place on the sixth, just political zones across the country. Uh, it's made landfall in Port Hackett, uh, from today as well. Uh, Barista, the question I asked earlier before the break, as you stated, if the, the National Assembly is under no compulsion to, uh, to take the recommendations or, or presentations and memoranda submitted to it and infuse them into the constitution, no matter how popular it might be, no matter how even right it might be for the country, what's the point or purpose then of, uh, organizations, individuals, groups like yourself, you know, going before the, uh, the panel to make any presentations?
The point is, just to give, to reflect the spirit of the people and what they are doing. Constitutional amendment process is a legislative process. As I said, it's, uh, it defers from, it defers from the process of a constituent assembly, which is convoking the people to make, and not to make another constitution by themselves. So the purpose of public hearing is to give the legislature and clarify the issues and to ensure that what they eventually do will reflect and represent the thinking of the people. So while it doesn't guarantee that power that is said will reflect in the final outcome, it at least gives them opportunity to know what the people want, to ensure that, then presumably what they want is what is in the interest for the people and the best for the people, that they have opportunity of knowing what the people want as the best for them. So it's an instrument for them, like putting the power in the hands of the people to make a new constituency assembly.
All right, you're welcome to join the conversation right now. The lines are officially 0302 0817 923 003, 0817 923 007 as well are the numbers to call, but live on facebook.com/nigerainforph, drop a comment there, or on Twitter at Nigeria Info PH, also WhatsApp on 0809 0306416. And, uh, once again, a reminder, we're discussing the ongoing public hearings on constitution review, uh, across, um, taking place across the country, across the six geopolitical regions or zones of the country at this time. All right, let's see, we've got a commenter via, do I have? Okay, we'll get to those in a moment, we're to the phone lines right now. Hello, Hard Fact, you're welcome.
Good evening, Dyo.
All right, go ahead.
My name is David West, and I'm calling you from Yeneguwa.
Go ahead, please.
First of all, I do not really have a problem with the constitutional amendment and public hearing that is going on, but my worry is, uh, looking at it from this angle, this is not easy. Now, from what your guests had just analyzed, that, uh, they had to give chance to the people that came from the far end of high bond, cross river, and what have you, to make their presentations before, this is, or allowances, giving to some of them to make their presentation. In that kind of atmosphere, I do not think they thought all the presentations of everyone or most persons would be accommodated. The next thing here, time, there is no time again, rush and no rush. Why it, why is it that it is not done in a manner that every senator, every house of representative member goes to their various states, their different states, and holds this public hearing with their people, not bringing people under one zone issue? If you do like that, um, I mean, a lot of persons will not be accommodated. Now, I haven't said that, finally, for me, my opinion, as a member of the civil liberty organization, uh, my immediate opinion is much more on giving powers to local governments. Let us give more powers to the local government, let the revenue, uh, that go to the local government even be higher than the state government, so that, uh, at that point in time, development will begin to spring off from the grassroots. It will now reduce these high tensions and high worries we are seeing all around. Have a nice day, God bless.
You as well. We've got, uh, candidate is gone. Now, Barista, your thought is coming, that rather than have the situation we had today as you experienced as well, uh, where, you know, for lack of time, you, you didn't have more than two minutes, there were might, have been others who didn't even have as many minutes as you had. Uh, do you think the caller's recommendation may have been a better approach?
Um, I, I, I think it's not surprising, whenever I have to have a public hearing, you'll have issues like that. Uh, what is important is that the commission, the, uh, committee has all the submissions made by everybody, so it's not what we are saying on stage here, that they needed to hear. They have the community memorandum that were submitted by every participant. So they have everything that we, we need to see, it has been said on paper already, they don't need to hear it, how many of them are there to hear it? It's not what we are saying here that matters, it's what we have submitted that they are supposed to work with and that is supposed to guide them. Uh, then on the second part of his submission, uh, as attractive as it looks, we need to understand that there are only two countries in this world that operate third tier, a tiered government, or men required to have an autonomous allocation, and that is Nigeria and Brazil. Both countries are not doing fantastically when it comes to how effective their federations are. Every other federation in the world, they dress between a central government and a regional government. Now, part of the reason we had a problem we have here in Nigeria, as you were saying, is that, you know, I've insulated the state government from development of the rural areas by creating another entity you call local government, which is independent of them, and you put money to that entity from, uh, from the centre. So you are rendering them, uh, free to do whatever they like, and, uh, and, uh, let me not give examples of, uh, things that are not, uh, very helpful to the people, but hard telephone projects that will be going on with. Now, in a normal federation, the state spends everything it's spending, every project it's doing through the local government, because the local government is the vehicle, is the instrument with which the state develops its territory. So what you have now is a large amount of money in the hands of state government, and they will keep that, and they will tell the local governments, "I'm not working," because there is a vote for local government. They are supposed to be using their entire votes coming to the state, in the local government, through the local government, to develop their territory. They are development centres, so they are not supposed to be distinct, receiving a distinct allocation. That is the instrument which the state is supposed to be spending, everything that is coming to the state, and not a distinct spending, uh, budget, different from what they are doing at the local government.
As a, a thought as much noted, I've got, uh, all right. Via WhatsApp, Emmanuel Okogbo, "Dyo, essentially constitutional review is a good exercise for any country or society where it has a written constitution like the 1999 Nigerian constitution. However, the willpower and honest commitment to operate or implement exactly what is written on the part of the operators is, uh, the basic prerequisite. Unfortunately, Nigerian operators in this case, the politicians grossly lack this willpower." That's Emmanuel once again. Uh, to the phone lines, I've got Emeka from Uwari. Emeka, you're welcome, go ahead.
Yeah, you see, my own take on this issue, I'm so skeptical. I just want to believe that this is just a jamboree. This is coming at the hill, at the hill of the agitation, all about they call it, they just, I believe personally, they just want to down the tension and down the, the agitation. Otherwise, listen to the professor what he says, I agree with him. The constitution does not, does not mandate them composite to take the views of the people. Or if he, okay, or if, 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 if not so, why can't the people, why didn't they make this in public? The way they make even COVID-19, Jingo, let the African Africans come out, let us come and see, they, why did they make it? Do you know that some people are now, they don't know that there's a, a, a gathering in what they hear now, in the name of a constitutional amendment? I just want to personally, I want to believe that, I don't believe that nothing will come out of this, Nigerians know what to do. Nigerians know what to do. Look at the analysis of the professor, very strict and very strict. Why can't they go back to the nineteen sixty three uh, what can they go back there? Even if, even if, I will, I will advise, let Nigerians come together, gather together because how the way they want to live as a nation. This is they just want to douse the agitation all over. But the people that they, 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 whatever they're doing, their people understand their intrigue, they will understand them. But they cannot bring any good result to solve Nigeria problems. Let them call the national dialogue, let them call, get that, what people call it, stop the national problem. Let all of us sit down and discuss and announce a new constitution that will guard on everybody and guard everybody. This one, they're just doing jamboree and making their money. I don't know that nothing will come out, Dyer.
From me, Barrister, do you suppose that might be what's playing our country? Secessionist groups and agitators are rising and springing up almost by the day. Could this be a ploy to simply calm nerves and create an impression that something is being done to attend to the uh aspirations of all Nigerians?
It's not impossible, but again, it's the proper thing to do, that if there is agitation all over the country, that those who are responsible for legislating should take steps to see how they can address them. Uh so whether or not they are doing it to douse it or they are doing it in response uh to address the issues that are agitating the people, it's still good, it's better than not doing it, provided at the end of the day, there will be a review. Um we have said we cannot give certainty with certainty, the degree of input that will be taken. But suppose they go and everywhere they go, they are telling them, go back to the legislative list of nineteen sixty. It would be difficult for them to do whatever they have to do without doing something like that, even if they don't put back all, to put back a substantial part of it. Uh it's going to be very likely that they will reflect it uh in what they do. As this, as station usually advises and as this program usually advises, let us not dismiss uh a priori uh the fact that something can come out of this over the fear that they may not do much. Let us do what needs to be done so that when the time comes, we can say we did our part, you were responsible for whatever trouble that eventually happened. So we should not dismiss it, we should take the advantage of it so that we make them know what we want.
Just your thoughts or concerns regarding the manner in which local government are administered in Nigeria, or at least should be administered based on the contents of the constitution? Uh even though as being practiced in Nigeria might be different with some other part of the road, even uh places where we copied our system of form of government from. But what is wrong with designing something that works for us? It may not be uh popular, it may not even exist, you say it exists in only one other country. It should entirely wrong if we evolve our own form of federalism and and we stick to it and we implement it as we have decided to do so in our constitution.
I think what is wrong is that what we are doing is a misconception of what is supposed to be done. Um when you take federalism beyond two spots, you are creating a serious problem, you are creating redundancy somewhere. If you want to go away with the state and have federal government and uh the federal government is federating with all the local, seven hundred and seventy four local government, fine. But if you are going to have a federation, it should be between the center and the unit government. Creating a third one leaves one redundant. Just like uh the previous caller said, and I responded to that, when you do that, you are leaving one government free. The federal government gets seventy something percent, about seventy eight percent of the total money and they just sit there in Abuja and uh think of uh how to extend it. They are not spending it on where our development needs are, they are not putting it where our mouths are, which is the local areas. The bulk of the money should have been at the state and the states will use the local governments to work. If you create local government, give them a vote, create state, give them a vote, then you're asking states to work where? Because everywhere in the state is part of a local government. The same way every part of the country apart from the central capital city is part of the federation uh of the of Nigeria. So what are they spending something uh percent of uh our income on? It should be where we need it. If you are going to have local, local governments are hard all over the world, every country has local administration system, but they don't exist constitutionally independent from the state. Even our constitution makes them subject to this, but creates that problem that we are facing now by making their funding distinct from the state funds. So you're creating redundancy at the state level.
But shouldn't it, shouldn't, shouldn't, shouldn't it be, shouldn't it be so much different? Our system is even from other, some other part of the road that you you might be referencing? Because they also have what is considered to be local governments, for example, in some countries they refer to them as mayors. These mayors are voted for, these mayors do have budgets, they have things that they've outlined, that, you know, developmental projects, and they are not directly answerable uh even to the governors of their state, they are more or less independent entities as well. Isn't not so much of a difference really, don't you think?
Yeah, the difference lies in the fact that those mayorates, let me use that expression, uh local councils and the and the local government, as I said, they exist in every country. But the difference is that their funding is not independent of the state. So what the state is doing in implementing this budget is supposed to be monitoring the local governments doing them, because it is the state budget that should be implemented at the local levels by the local authorities. The difference we have here is that you have a vote from the center that is going directly to the local government. So you ask the state to control them, to take care of everything except funding. You ask the state to even create them and say the national government will eventually put them in the constitution before they can be funded. Why should one man create responsibility for another? And why should what should be an instrument that what a man should use in addressing his house become something autonomous from him and funded from outside? We have complicated the matter. They are not hearing, there are local government systems in every country, in the sense which runs the unitary system of government, in Ghana, which runs the unitary system of government, in the United States of America, which is a federation like us, and elsewhere. But the problem is that they are not distinct from the state government, they are part and part of the structure of the state government with which the state government function.
All right, maybe another caller or two will ramp up the conversation. Hello, Hard Fact, welcome.
Hello.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, uh this is candidate of this.
Go ahead.
Yes, I want to make my little contribution to um the exposition our brother is making. I do not see any difference between the federation as it operates in America and in Nigeria. The evolution of power, whether it is made into the federal and the state, are the same thing as it is made in Nigeria, federal state and local government. Now, the problem is they will to divide this money and give to the local government, that is the problem. Now, I do not think that the local governments have been accused of not managing their their resources very well. But the problem that exists is that when this this thing should perform as function.
Candidate, 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 I think you made a point, but that's the much that I can take from you, I am pressed to answer. Barrister, a quick response to his comments please in about a minute.
Yeah, I already explained what the difference is and where the problem lies. So it does look like the same, it looks like the problem is that they are not releasing the money, uh all the money to the local government. But the money going to the local government is not enough. The state can build bridges and flyovers and roads, they can concentrate them in one area or the other, it won't be visible because there is already local government charged with responsibility and giving money.
But once again, the reason, the reasons we're not used for that is even as as our system currently is, the accusation is, do not, even if we had the more or less an extension of the state governments, the state, a state governor can still decide to withhold what should go to local governments. As a matter of fact, he's in a better position to do that than he is now.
But the difference is that it will become visible. Right now, what they are doing with allocation that comes to the state is not visible because we are looking elsewhere for our responsibilities. Developing every village in that state is supposed to be their responsibility and it's supposed to be, local government is supposed to be exercising power involved to them, which is state power being implemented by them. So if you concentrate in one place, it will be obvious.
Barrister, I apologize, but we must wrap up the conversation on this note. Uh thanks for joining, my guest is embarrassed to reach out to Coach, Associate Professor of Public Law, River State University. Barrister, many thanks for your time.
A great pleasure.
We'll take a break right now and the news update comes up at five o'clock. Discussions continue afterwards, so please stay with us.